Thank you, Sean, and welcome everyone. This is the Wednesday, June twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Milton Select Board. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand twenty-one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. This act signed by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one includes an extension of the remote meeting provisions. Accordingly, all votes will be by roll call during the course of this meeting. At this time, I would like to offer introductions. Can we begin with Vice Chair, please?
Mike Zulus, Vice Chair.
Our Secretary, Mr. Wells, will be late joining us in about fifteen minutes. Ms. Bradley?
Ellen Bradley, member.
Roxanne?
Roxanne Musto, member.
Henry?
Henry Fagan, Town Administrator.
And Arthur Doyle, serving as your chair. At this time, I would like to ask if everybody could please join in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
For which it stands. One nation. Under God.
Indivisible, liberating, justice.
Justice for all. Might be appropriate, following the Pledge of Allegiance, to note that next Monday is Independence Day, July fourth. We celebrate our national independence. Just a quick aside, when I used to commute from New Jersey when I was working in Manhattan, there was an older gentleman on the train car that I usually would be on. And just before Thanksgiving, he began to read aloud to the entire car. He caught everybody by surprise, he caught me by surprise, and he didn't keep most people by surprise because they've been doing it for years. And what he did was to read the Mayflower Compact every morning that week before Thanksgiving. And in July, he'd read the Declaration of Independence during the week before the Fourth of July. It was amazing what we all learned in those experiences. At this time, I would like to turn to public comment. I'll just review the protocol. We have set fifteen minutes aside for public comment. Each participant will have up to three minutes to speak on the topic of his choice. If there is time remaining, and no other speakers, a previous speaker may return to speak for up to an additional three minutes or until the fifteen minutes is completed. And Lynn, while I have my chronometer watch, I'd like to ask you if you could assist in monitoring the time and maybe give us a signal if you could when we have thirty seconds remaining for each speaker if they reach that point in time. The first person to be recognized is State Senator Walter Timmeltie. Walter, could you begin by giving us your Milton address, please?
Certainly, Chair Doyle, thank you very much. I'm Walter Timmeltie, eleven Beach Street in Milton.
Thank you, Senator, and welcome.
Thank you very much, originally from Thatcher Street in Milton. So I thank you very much, Chair Doyle. Lynn, I promise you I will be under three minutes to Select Board Member Bradley, Select Board Member Musto, Vice Chair Zulus, and Chair Doyle, and of course, Town Administrator Fagan, thank you very much for being here tonight. Just a brief update, on June sixteenth in the State Senate, we engrossed a general government bond bill. A week or two prior to that, the House of Representatives passed their version of a general government bond bill. I filed several amendments, one in particular, specifically I wanted to highlight for the board, and actually two in the file analysis I'd like to highlight. One being five hundred thousand dollars in general government bonds to be authorized for improvements, two hundred fifty thousand specifically for Blue Hill Parkway, and two hundred fifty thousand for infrastructure improvements as well for Truman Highway. Very important roads, obviously gateways to our town in so many ways. And I think we'd all agree that we need to spruce them up. It's a big priority of mine, and I believe this is one way, one mechanism, one avenue to pursue to accomplish that goal. But in both cases, two hundred fifty thousand dollars for infrastructure improvements in terms of curbing, lighting, sidewalks, and what have you. So I'll stay on that. We will have a conference committee with the House of Representatives to reconcile the two documents and come up with a mutual document, which is called a Conference Committee Report. That amendment, of course, was adopted, and I believe that it will survive the Conference Committee Report. I'm very confident. I will continue to lobby the conferees on the Conference Committee, which who are hammering out a mutual document. And obviously, it's very important to me, it's a big priority, and we need to improve the infrastructure for both roads and enhance the aesthetics of the road infrastructure. So just wanted to report on that, and also I filed a separate amendment. I have the privilege in the Norfolk Bristol and Plymouth Senate District of representing ten towns. I filed a bond amendment seeking fifty thousand dollars for each and every one of the ten councils on aging that I represent, including, of course, Council on Aging in Milton, which I believe does a great job for our seniors, who of course deserve the very best in this town. And that amendment was adopted as well. I actually debated and spoke on the floor of the House, excuse me, the Senate, old habits, but on the floor of the State Senate, that was adopted as well. I'm confident that that will survive the Conference Committee Report as well. But nonetheless, I will stay on it with the conferees in both the House and Senate, and just wanted to simply report on that and inform, of course, all the voters who we all work for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator, we're grateful to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to be with us this evening.
Thank you so much, Chair Doyle, and to Member Musto, Member Bradley, Vice Chair Zulus, Town Administrator Fagan, and of course Lynn, how'd I do there? Okay?
Two minutes, you were Dave.
Not bad, not bad, okay. Well, I thank you all very much. Thank you, Lynn, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And a very happy Independence Day to everybody in town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
A couple people in the attendees list with their hands raised. I'll take them in the order that they are given in and invite any others in the attendees list who wish to speak to raise their hand as well. The first hand is for Libby. Could you promote Libby, please? Let me see, it has dropped, so.
Hello.
Oh, Libby, you are here, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a trick, my name is actually, my name is Jay Funling, I'm married to Libby, and I live at thirty-nine Cias Lane.
Welcome, Mr. Funling, thank you for being with us.
Okay, thank you. I'm here tonight to talk about the pension funding schedule that the town is on. Pension funding for this coming year for Milton is seven point nine million dollars, and it's growing at six percent per year, which exceeds a two and a half percent limit on our largest source of revenue. We often hear how the growth of health insurance costs hurts our town budget, but the pension contribution has risen faster than the health insurance budget over the past fifteen years, or at least that was true when I looked at the numbers closely two years ago. As far as I can tell, the six percent growth in the budget number is continuing with a plan that was put in place several decades ago, when the pension contribution was less than half of what it is now, and the expectation was that the pension would be fully funded in twenty seventeen. I appreciate the foresight put in place back then, but I don't want to just contribute on autopilot because that is no longer the correct plan for our town. If the pension contribution were limited to a two and a half percent increase or even lower, it would give the town a few hundred thousand dollars in much-needed breathing room to the budget. This year, the actuary from the state presented two options to the town's retirement board. One option had contributions continuing to increase at six percent, funding the plan in twenty twenty-seven. The other had contributions growing at one and a half percent, funding the plan one year later. I spoke at the October meeting of the of the pension board where these options were presented, and I also asked the board to seriously consider either the lower increase or even a flat schedule to relieve the budget impact to the town. They listened respectfully and said they would decide at their November meeting. At that November meeting, they chose to go with the higher number. I don't know their reasoning, and the meeting minutes do not say. At that October meeting I attended, I encouraged the pension board to speak to the Select Board or the Warrant Committee to see how the pension contribution schedule could best fit in with the overall town budget. I was told that meeting that they were very specifically set up not to be subordinate to either board. I understand and appreciate that, but they are still part of Milton Town Government, and I would like to see them work with the rest of town government to make our budget work the best it can. And if their decision is still to have the pension contribution far exceed the two and a half percent increase and exceed the increase in healthcare costs, I would like them to explain to the town why that is for the best. Thank you for your time.
And thank you, Mr. Funling, for also sending along your presentation, which was shared with the entire Select Board. Our next speaker is Dr. Cindy Christensen. Could you promote Dr. Christiansen, please? Dr. Christiansen, you are muted. Thank you. You're still muted, Cindy.
Okay.
There you go.
Yep. Cindy. Cindy Christensen, fifty-nine Collumore Street. Chair Doyle, your agenda says that once again you're going into a closed-door meeting to consider litigating the FAA four L RNAV, litigation that will help certain parts of Milton in a limited way and will remove the small amount of relief that the four L RNAV will provide to the most affected parts of town. The fact that you're spending tax dollars on the work to appeal is deplorable. Given that you are still meeting about these things, tells me two things. Number one, you're getting very poor advice from whoever you are listening to. And number two, your board has no understanding of aviation law, FAA regulations, past legal cases, nor what it means to have significant aviation noise and pollution. Appealing the rod will be costly, and you will fail. Regarding the poor decision, the poor advice you're receiving, it is unconscionable that you have only listened to residents who stand to gain from the appeal. I also think that you're listening to a town council who is trained in environmental law but who has shown sparse and misconceived knowledge with respect to aviation law. Regarding your board's lack of knowledge and understanding of aviation law, FAA regulations, past cases, and the legal definition of significant noise, do you not know that municipalities with a lot more knowledge and resources than Milton have either lost their appeals or wisely decided not to file? Have you read the LAX ruling, the Maryland one, what about Georgetown? Have you even read the final EA for the four L RNAV? Have you kept up with San Francisco's attempts and decisions after their board talked with one of the best aviation attorneys in the country? There are only a few true aviation attorneys in the U.S. I have talked with two of them, and they have used some of my work. But here is the bottom line, from what I've learned from them and from the nine years I've been doing volunteer work for Milton, the Boston region, and the country. Regarding the four L environmental assessment, the FAA has followed the law and the regulations. You also should know that when in doubt, the courts defer to the FAA's technical abilities. You do not have those skills, and you refuse to listen to those of us who do. Let me repeat, the FAA has followed the law and the regulations. Thinking that Milton will be different is both arrogant and reckless. Let the residents who want to appeal, appeal on their own dime. Do not use my tax dollars or the tax dollars from others in East Milton. Also, are members of your board who have financial conflicts of interest recusing themselves? Are you listening to A-Net members, all of whom live to the west of the four L flight paths? Do the right thing, drop this appeal nonsense, and put your efforts towards runway use restrictions, runway use policies, legislation requiring quieter and less polluting planes, and the upcoming FAA reauthorization. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Christiansen. Most appreciated. Our next speaker is Mr. Philip Johanning. Could you please promote Mr. Johanning?
Hi, sorry. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you, and welcome, Mr. Johanning.
I'm gonna follow on with Cindy Christiansen. I'm baffled, not that I know a lot about this proposed court case that you you're endeavoring on, but and the reason for that, I guess, is because there were no public meetings to discuss what the town should do or to explain what it proposes with this legal action. I think there should have been. When you look at four L and four R, four R gets ninety percent of all inbound traffic on the fours. And the town is looking at legal action to, let's say, challenge the four L RNAV. When that side of town gets ten percent currently, it seems to me that a generous town would take advantage of this opportunity to do dispersion. We've talked in meetings with Congressman Lynch before about the benefits of dispersion. And I think the equal use of four L and four R, fifty-fifty with inbound flights, would be the most fair thing to do for the quality of life in the eastern side of town. And there's no reason in my mind why four R should be unduly burdened by aircraft noise and pollution. I think it would only be fair to really promote the four L RNAV and to insist on a fifty-fifty distribution of flights so that we all share the burden equally until a better solution is found. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johanning. We have a hand raised for Mr. Gene Sullivan. Could Mr. Sullivan be promoted, please?
All right. I noticed later on the agenda you have forty-one Wall Street coming up. I'd just like to raise is, go forward and the town takes control of forty-one Wall Street, that for the past fifteen, sixteen years, the Yacht Club has been under order from the Conservation Commission to follow the Massachusetts Clean Marina Guide. Unfortunately, that has never happened, and the town has never enforced it. If you go to the landing, you're gonna see three signs up where the boats are stored that says, "All Boat Maintenance," and it describes the maintenance shall be done in a designated maintenance area. There is no designated maintenance area. A designated maintenance area to the Yacht Club is any place there's a boat. If you look at the Clean Marina Guide, the way I read it, I think the only thing that can happen down in the marina and meet the current environmental laws is boat storage only. They power wash their boats, that needs a federal and a state permit. I'd like also point out to you that if you read the Clean Marina Guide, Lot twenty-five, is a gravel piece of land. For forty years, plus years, they've been putting boats on there. They've been painting, they've been spilling oil, and it just seeps into the ground and they're power washing. So I would hope that this board would take a more active role in enforcing environmental rules when they take control of forty-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Most appreciated. And Mr. Sullivan's comments remind me to note early on in the agenda that Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Discussion Approval, Conveyance of Forty-One Wall Street to the Town of Milton will be deferred to our next meeting. At this time, the Select Board will entertain motions to enter into four executive sessions, after which it will adjourn from executive session and return to open session. First motion is to move to enter executive session for discussing strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically Anne Marie Fagan, interim town administrator. Is there a second to the motion, please? Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any comment or discussion, seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Second motion is to move into executive session for discussion strategy with respect to potential litigation relative to the final environmental impact assessment of the Federal Aviation Administration RNAB, RNAV, runway forty-one at Boston Logan International Airport. Having the discussion in executive session is based on the belief that having the discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect upon the litigation position of the town. Is there a second to the motion, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Seeing no hands for comment or questions, roll call, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Third executive session, motion, move to enter executive session for litigation strategy against the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, MBTA, related to the conditions of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adam Street, Milton, Massachusetts. Having the discussion in executive session is based on the belief that the discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect upon the litigation position of the town. Is there a second to this motion, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Seeing no hands raised, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. In the fourth and final motion, move to executive session to discuss the lease and value of real property of the Kidder Branch Library located at one oh one Blue Hills Parkway, under purpose six, General laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, subsection A six. Having the discussion in executive session is based on the belief that having the discussion in open session may have a detrimental impact upon the town's negotiating position with a third party. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Seeing no hands, roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Following executive session, adjournment from executive session, we will return to open session for the remainder of the Select Board meeting.
Thank you, Sean, and we are returned to open session. I think everybody, both on the select board and supporting the select board as well as the attendees in the public committee watching for the occasion. We will return now to the open meeting agenda. The first item is item number eight. Discussion update approval contract extension of Anne Marie Fagan interim town administrator. I will entertain a motion for the extension of Ms. Fagan's contract until September 30.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion to approve the contract extension until nine thirty twenty two.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second? Miss Busta was seconded any discussion seeing now he is Mr. Zillas.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Busta and Mr. Doyle. Yes. Next item on our agenda is discussion update environmental impact assessment. The Federal Aviation Administration RNAV runway four L at Boston Logan International Airport. Richard, you have a motion that you want to make on this?
You're supposed to chair. I'll make a motion that we. Oh, I can't remember because I didn't write it down. Michael, what was the, I'll make a motion that we.
I have some word to hear.
I can't even remember what the language was. You're gonna have to give that to someone else.
Yeah, the, the motion is to petition the, the First Circuit Court of Appeals to review the FAA's final environmental assessment with respect to Boston Logan runway RNAV four L.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Seeing now he is raised, Mr. Zulus.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Busta.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number three. From the executive session, but ten on the open meeting agenda discussion update conditions of the stairs at the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority MBTA station located at Adam Street, Milton, Massachusetts. Mrs. Zulus, did you want to make some comment on what the outcome was or?
Well, yeah, I I guess I guess this is for the purposes of an update.
Correct.
And the and the update is the the stairs at the Adam Street station have been in disrepair, disrepair and a blight and a safety hazard for our community for more than seven years, more than the entire term of the Baker administration. We don't know exactly how long they've been closed and in disrepair, but it's probably between seven and 10 years, but it's certainly for the entire term of the Baker administration. We have, over the last couple of years, tried to get the Baker administration to do something with respect to to this safety hazard in our community. We've we've reached out to them, our state representatives have reached have reached out to them. We've met with the the general manager of the MBTA, Mr. Poftak, and there has been no action, no response. Last December, December twenty second, Town Council made a demand on the MBTA that they finally do something with respect to the the safety hazard caused by these stairs. And there has again been no response, no action, not even the courtesy of a response. And so the question at this point is, is, is what the select board and what the town do now in the face of no action by the danger caused by the MBTA in our community? And and I guess it's fair to say that the select board on behalf of the town is looking into alternatives. Given the lack of response and the lack of action on behalf on behalf of the Baker administration, the Department of Transportation and the MBTA.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Number eleven, discussion update value of real property of the Kittle Library located at one oh one Blue Hill Avenue. The select board has tasked Town Council in negotiating the purchase of Kittle Library with Discovery Schoolhouse for a time period not to exceed August thirty first, two thousand and twenty two. At this time, we'll turn to agenda item number twelve, discussion approval repurpose of funds of the Mass Department of. The Department of Environmental Protection, I should know that one by heart by now, three one nine grant for construction of Algerine Corner Stormwater Best Management Practices, hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars to be used instead for the construction of the school storm water best management practices located at the Collie Court School. I see we have Mr. Berkeley with us. Mr. Berkeley, can we turn to you, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes, and members of the board, Chase Berkeley, Director of Public Works. So what we're bringing you up to date on is a request that we put into the DEP to repurpose the grant that was awarded for Algerine Corner to another project that we've been working to design behind the Cunningham Collie Court School, which is very similar in nature and related to the same watershed of the Unquity Brook. So the grant we received is time sensitive and in light of the land use issues that have come up with Algerine Corner, we thought it prudent to seek permission from DEP, which they have authorized at this point to repurpose this money towards the other project for the time being, so we can continue that effort while we await clarity on the Algerine Corner project.
Thank you, Mr. Berkeley. Are there any questions or comments from members of the select board? I see none. I want to, before we have a motion and a vote, I thank you and Marina and others, Mr. Berkeley, for all the work that went into making this possible. It was no small undertaking. Mr. Wells, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question for Director Berkeley. So repurposing this from Algerine to the Collie Court, and then what happens to that project? That's, can I just ask that question?
So can I just ask, Mr. Wells, do you mean what happens to the Algerine project?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so that it's still held in abeyance right now until we get some official legal opinions from both the state and our own town council on what the land use permissions are. We, you know, we have some verbal guidance, but we haven't really seen anything writing on that yet.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's awesome. Good to go. Thank you.
Do we have a motion on?
I'll make a motion approve. I'll make a motion approved request is outlined by the TP ever director.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Do we have a second? Ms. Busta seconds. Seeing now hands, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Busta.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. And as we go, Chase is remaining with us for item number thirteen, discussion approval contract with WM Avon Incorporated in the town of Milton, Massachusetts for recycling purposes and services. Chase?
So thank you again, Mr. Chair. So this is the contract that covers the processing of the material that the town recycles. So we have a contract in place with Sunrise Scavenger to collect the material, and they deliver it to a waste management Avon Materials Processing Facility. And that's that's where it's sorted by both manual and computerized mechanical equipment, and then separated into commodities that are then sold out in the open market. So this is a new three year deal. Our existing deal will expire at the end of June of this month, and Waste Management has been a good partner over the past contract and the contract before that, and we seek to continue with them. We did look at other options. However, there aren't a whole lot of facilities that do this type of processing in our area, and the price to move the material to other facilities starts to affect the hauling price that we pay to the hauler, given the traffic and fuel issues of today. So Waste Management is certainly the most logistical convenient point for us to bring the material. And again, they've had been a good partner. We we did see some sticker shock for sure. The the fees that they charged to do this with went up pretty significantly from the last contract and from our current price. However, they did make some improvements in their plant so that the value of the material that they're able to sell on the open market has also increased. So just when you're looking at this, as a reminder, the fee that you see they charge is not what we pay. We pay the fee minus the value of the goods. So that's a fluctua, excuse me, a fluctuating commodity. And so that price can can be in our favor, and you can actually make money in recycling, which hasn't happened in a while, but it has happened in the past. And it can go go down very low depending on market conditions, and it can cost us more. Right now, we're paying about ten dollars a ton to process the recycling material based on our May invoice. So that's a pretty good price. We were paying upwards of a hundred dollars a ton two years ago. So we're in a good place where the markets are good. It's just the, you know, the unknowns of the world economy that sometimes can affect these contracts and market values.
Thank you, Mr. Berkeley. Mr. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I I this is really just related to item twelve. I just wanted to, I had meant to point out at the end that, not to bury the headline for those in the area of Algerine Quarter who are very interested in that project, that at this time, the DPW is not going forward with that project at Algerine Corner. I just wanted to, you know, make that make that clear that that's what's going on with with respect to item twelve. That was my own comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. Any comments on item number fourteen? I'm sorry, item number thirteen. Do we have a motion to approve the contract on the table?
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind if I just interrupt, if you all, if you could consider authorizing the town administrator execute.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion approve this contract and approve the, and authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Thank you, Ms. Busta. Seeing now he is raised, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Busta.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you, Chase. I know that's a very competitive issue. Your presentation was extremely clear and appreciated.
Thanks, everybody.
Item number fourteen is the discussion approval comment letter to the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority MBTA regarding the proposed bus network change. But Tim was going to try and be with us. Anne Marie, I don't see him among the attendees.
Don't see me either, Mr. Chairman.
Want to make a comment? Ms. Fagan, on this?
I don't see him either, Mr. Chairman. You have a draft letter in your packet that Tim drafted for you as a comment letter regarding the MBTA redesign of bus routes.
And we had a prior presentation on this or introduction as an information item as well. It has been very well publicized in the press.
And this is a draft comment letter, so if you'd like to make changes, make changes.
So at this time, we're being asked to approve the draft?
Yes.
Is there a motion to do so?
Chair, I'll move to approve the comment, Leonard of the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority regarding proposed bus network changes.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Busta. Seeing now hands raised, I will take the role. Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells. I think we have lost Mr. Wells. Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Busta.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Item number fifteen, discussion update natural gas electricity contracts. Mr. Ritchie is going to be with us for that, and we'd ask Sean if you could please vote him. Welcome back, Richard.
Thank you always making the switch.
That's understood. Did it fast. We're waiting for Richie to join us, be voted. He's still in the attendee. Here he is. Mr. Ritchie, you are on, you're there. Welcome, Mr. Ritchie. Thank you for being with us for discussion on the natural gas and electricity contracts.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Chair and select board members. So basically, what I'm trying to do is do an update for the town and for the schools. So currently, we are in contract with power options for our natural gas and electricity. I have a bunch of notes to kind of bring you up to speed of where we're at, and then obviously, we know the market right now is really crazy. But basically, the town of Milton was in the process of renewing our natural gas electricity contracts. Since two thousand and eleven, the town has been a member of power options, and we have greatly benefited over the years using power options. The national gas contract was executed in two thousand and eighteen and will end in October of twenty two, about four months from now. The contract for electricity was executed in nineteen, in two thousand and nineteen, will end in December of twenty three, which is about seventeen months from now. Not, you know, I am concerned about the electricity, but we have some time to decide what we're going to do. Our current contractual rate with natural gas is about six dollars and forty nine cents a decaderm. The current contractual price of electricity is about zero point eight six kilowatts. The contract with power options right now for the supply portion only is, you know, we have there for natural gas and for ever source in the, the ever source in the natural gas is for the transportation delivery. So I'm just trying to explain, it's not, it's not the total gas. It's, you know, it's kind of broken up. So the town and the schools combined right now use about fifty, fifty one thousand decaderms per year. The estimated cost today, I did some calculations today, estimated cost today of this contract is about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's an estimate. If we locked in today with power option, it would be fourteen dollars, fifty sets of decaderm. That price would be seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So obviously, you can see the market where the market's going. It's just the same as your heating oil. A year ago was two fifty, now it's six bucks. Gasoline was two fifty, now it's five dollars. Same with natural gas, same electricity. What I'd like to propose tonight is that, you know, I don't sign contracts like this as always the town administrator and the school superintendent. I think when we get a new town administrator, I think we need to start, get a quick committee going and to look at these rates. Me personally, been involved with, you know, working with MOB over the years, Mike Dennehy, even Kevin Mann back in the days when we had power options, Glenn Pavichek. I think what we should do now is not do anything because it's just too, we don't know what's going to happen four months from now. It could go up, it could go down. One option that we do have that we can default on the contract and go back to our national grid, their weight's about eleven dollars right now a decaderm. So that would be almost a hundred thousand dollar savings by not going into contract. So, you know, so these are decisions, I just, you know, when we were, had a meeting, I was meeting with Mike Dennehy probably five months ago, saying the contract's coming to end, and obviously, you know, the, you know, the world went, you know, the world went crazy in the last six months with the war and, you know, all these, all utilities going up. So I just think that we have to wait. If we lock into a contract, if the rates come down, we're stuck with the contract. If we go into a contract, if the rates go up, then we're kind of locked in. But at fourteen, fifteen dollars and three hundred thousand dollars additional right now, I I think we have to wait till we get a new town administrator. We have to join a little committee, work with Amy Dexter on the school, on the school side, and just anybody else that wants to support it, and then decide when is the best time to go into contract? Or do we wait? Do we go back out to bid to another company? We have a lot of options. It's just, but that's the world going forward. It's very volatile and it's very expensive. I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Maybe I can lead off with the question. Do you have any intelligence on what solar communities to Milton are doing on this at the present time?
Yeah, I did call a few other towns. Some towns have decided just to lock in because they were just so nervous. Many towns I I have decided to kind of wait and wait and see. I spoke to a few of my colleagues that are energy, energy managers. That's a a small piece of my expertise. I'm not an expert in that. They said, Bill, I would wait. I would wait right now. It's just, it's too high. And as a default, if at these types of rates, you might want to go back to the, right back to utility like like every other homeowner does, and that way it is better. But unfortunately, they can go up too, because they're going to be faced with the same difficulties as any other, like power options, the way to just keep going up and with a war and, you know, all these are, it's just a tough time right now.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Comments or questions from other members of the board, please? Ms. Bradley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Ritchie. How are you? It's wonderful to see you again. Thank you for all you do for our town. I was just curious about solar panel. And I know that some other towns are really starting to put those in, and so I'm just curious to know if there's been any discussions amongst the schools, maybe utilizing their rooftops, including the new school that is to possibly be built, hopefully be built, whether or not we are starting to look towards sustainable ways to provide energy to our buildings here in town.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't have all my solar, solar notes with me tonight, but basically, the schools back in two thousand and twelve, when we we did a PPA with with the company. So we do have roughly about twenty five hundred solar panels on the roofs in Milton. You just don't see them at the high school at the Collie Court. Yeah, so, yeah, so we did that. The PPA, we do save money every year. We've looking at different options going forward. I am assuming that the new school, if a new school ever does get built, when it does get built, that will be highly looked at, you mean? And, you know, I was working with Mike Dennehy before we left. We were looking at the DPW yard, like solar farms and looking at parkland. So I think when a new town administrator comes, we get to start, start that process. So I think when a new town administrator comes, we get to start, start that process again.
Thank you so much, Bill. That's great news. Thank you.
Mr. Wells, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Bill. As you know, we've worked, collaborated on many projects together over the years and I don't think anyone worked out as far as sustainable energy, everything from changing all light bulbs, all the things you've done, quoting all the solar panels in so many locations. The attempt to put the windmill up on the dump road, most people don't even remember that anymore. That was probably fifteen years ago now. All of the effort there, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be comfortable whatever you want us to do, whatever you think we should do. I mean, no one knows our infrastructure or our energy needs and uses more than you do. So I'm, I'm going to be comfortable with whatever you think you can do. As you recall, we faced a similar thing like this a few years ago. You might remember when we were, we were, we wanted the gas contract, townwide gas contract. At, at, actually not us, we bought in, we went into the Norfolk County contract and I think nearly twenty out of twenty-eight of us did it. And then, then the the price bottomed out two months later and they didn't want to let us settle those contracts. And they tried to lock us in that contract for years. So I want to be comfortable with whatever you recommend or whatever you want to do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for everything you do, Bill, as you know.
And Mr. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thanks, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill, you mentioned having a committee and waiting till the new town administrator gets in place. Is that going to compromise us all, if compromise us at all if we wait? Should we, should we try to get some people together in advance of that? If we, you know, if we, if we don't have a new town administrator in for another, say, another month or more, should we go ahead and start getting people talking about this now?
So what I've done, actually, I spoke to power options in the last couple of weeks. And they're going to start giving me weekly updates of where we are if we, if we kind of lock in. So I'll have a good gauge myself if the rates are going up, if the rates are staying the same, if the rates are going down. I think we, I think we, I think another month is not, is fine, you know. But I think after, you know, a month and a half, you know, we need to start making the decision. Either we don't go back into contract or we decide to go back to national grid for, you know, our supply. You know, I just don't think paying fif- fifteen dollars right now in a decaderm is just, it's a lot of money. But.
And I think we cut a deal with a solar farm, the school, on the school side, back in maybe fifteen or sixteen. But then I, but I think it wasn't, ultimately wasn't built. So I don't know if there's, if there are other deals out there on the, on the solar side. But I think the one we, the deal that we cut back then was, was going to be a good deal. I think it ultimately didn't get built. It was going to be at a, it's going to be at a supermarket or something. You were, but anyway, the point is, are there other deals out there, other potential deals out there on the solar side that Aaron mentioned, so?
Yeah, like I said, no, I know, Mike and I, we were, over the last year, been looking at that. And that solar deal back in two thousand and fifteen, I was involved with that. That would have been a enormous asset if it took place. That developer went, you know, I guess they made another deal with somebody else and that kind of fizzled out, you mean, so. But, you know, yeah, but like I said, you, you know, a lot of towns, you know, a lot of bigger towns, they have an energy manager. That's all they do. You know, I, this is like one percent of the thousand things I do, it's one of the hats I wear. But you, you really need somebody that's dedicated, that can spend forty, fifty hours a week on this. Because other than that, you can never get the ball going down the hill. You mean, it's really difficult. But, you know, like, you know, and I, and I, you know, and just, just, just to bring it out there, and I always, you know, not, I never want to pat myself on the back. But I can tell you, since two thousand and twelve, since two thousand and twelve, we have earned about one point five million dollars in energy for all the grants. We've changed over twenty-two thousand light bulbs throughout the town to LED. That savings is all in the town building, school buildings. You really don't see it, but just, I can only imagine if we didn't do those upgrades, how much our electric bills would actually be. But green communities, we've been a green community since two thousand and ten. We've done about nineteen projects, so we saved a lot of money and we, you know, everybody knows Milton. And Milton, we, we save so much money that the grant was for two hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. We only get a hundred because we've been back to the well so many times that they had to shut us down. So that, you know, so that's, that's coolest for everyone that, you know, we all, we all worked hard. But, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty amazing when they actually shut, when they actually shut you down. They say you can't take any more money. Because a lot of towns weren't getting the grants that Milton got over the years. So that's, that's coolest to the town. But, yeah, I'm always looking, I love, I love doing energy stuff, but it takes a lot of work. And, you know, you, you really need a big sustainable committee, you know, with a few architects, a few engineers that really know how to do it. You mean, so a lot of paperwork.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. And noting market volatility and the global issues that are at hand, and you cited at least one of them. I'm sure that you will let Ms. Fagan know if there's any thing of immediate attention that needs to come back to the select board before, when we're otherwise planned to do so, i.e. after the new town administrators apply. Anne Marie, was there anything that you wanted to add to this topic?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Ritchie covered it all. Thank you.
Any comments from any other members of the board? Seeing none, Mr. Ritchie, thank you very much. And we are patient and waiting until this particular time in the evening to be with us.
All right. Thank you all. Have a good evening. Yep. Bye-bye.
We turn now to item number sixteen on the agenda, discussion approval, extension of easement located at forty-one Wolf Street in favor of the town of Milton. Mr. Wells, would you be willing to comment on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got over, I've got probably two hundred pages of notes dating back to two thousand and eighteen, when the MP, when the M A P C finished their final report on the recommendations to the town relative to the landing twenty-five Worf, what is, we now know is forty-one Worf. So tonight, as you know, we have an easement that we've been signing since April two thousand and sixteen, twenty fifteen, with eighty-eight Worf LLC, which extends an agreement in their special permit regarding the piece of property at forty-one Worf. To make a long story short, as this board knows, and as Anne Marie knows, going back to, and Town Council knows, going back to Mr. Dennehy's tenure, we've been negotiating now with the owners of forty-one Worf Street well over almost a year on the transfer of this piece of property from them to the town of Milton. I can report that we're very close on this. And Kevin, you can weigh in as this is really an important thing because one of the key things that came out of that M A P C report, after I don't even know how many meetings that the M P I C had, M A P C residents, neighbors, tenants, was that how could we open up access to the waterfront, which you've heard me articulate many times, just a jewel for this town, to residents of the community, especially as passive recreation, kayak and canoeing, boating, and especially crew have really increased exponentially over the past decade in this area? So I think I am going to make a motion, oh, actually, I'll make a motion that we extend this easement or sign this easement for thirty days. So that would be through July thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two. With the intention then, as you'll see on a later agenda item, to make the final conveyance and purchase between the town of Milton and eighty-eight LLC for this entire piece of property. And I see Kevin has his hand up and then he can weigh in whatever he wants.
Mr. Fryte, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the select. You should have a letter that was sent to me by Council for eighty-eight Wolf Street this afternoon. That's Ned Cochran. It extends the easement, which you may know at forty-one Wolf Street, which the town meeting authorized the select board to acquire at its fall town meeting in two thousand and twenty-one, which is subsequently the sale of that property or the gift of that property to the town has been offered by the almost unanimously by the Wolf Street condominium association. There are three easements that run in favor of the town. And this letter just simply extends those three easements in favor of the town for the next thirty days, while Ned Cochran and I are able to finalize the terms of the deed that the condo association will be executing in favor of the town. The select board is the authority under a couple of different places, but certainly under its annual town meeting vote that authorizes the select board to accept easements. That would fall on, this would fall into that category. So this just simply maintains the status quo for thirty days while Ned and I can hammer out the details.
Which we are pretty close on, Mr. Chair.
And congratulations on that progress. This is standing that it's going to come to conclusion. And hopefully, as you mentioned, Mr. Wells will have this on the agenda for our July thirteenth meeting. Any other comments, any other questions for either Mr. Wells or Mr. Fryte?
Can I, Mr. Chair, Kevin, I'll go ahead, Kevin, I see you still have your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to add that the first, do you all have that letter agreement? I forwarded it to Anne Marie at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know if she's been able to send it around.
I did not.
Okay. So it just says, I'll, I'll just read it to you. It's very short. It says, pursuant to our telephone communication of this date, this letter agreement will extend the term of the Seventh Amendment to grant an easement thirty, twenty twenty-one for a period of days from June thirtieth, twenty-two until July thirtieth, twenty-two, in order to complete the administrative process necessary to conduct the closing on the transfer of the entire property at forty-one Wolf Street from the Milton Landing Condominium Association to the town of Milton. This agreement, the closing will take place on July, unless we're able to conduct it on an earlier date. And then it is signed by Ned Cochran on behalf of the Milton Landing Condominium Association. And there's a line for the town of Milton Select Board by Kevin Frytek, so authorized. So if, if you do want to do this, which I, I would advise you to go ahead and agree to extend the easement, you're basically accepting an extension of the easement from the condominium association to do so, to vote to do so, and then to vote me to off, to sign on behalf of this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Fryte. Mr. Motion, Mr. Wells would like to make such a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make motion authorize Town Council, Kevin Frytek, to sign the extension of this easement or on behalf of the board for, what was, was the date, thirty days till July?
July thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, unless we're able to close on an earlier date.
And if so, that'd be the language, just to add, not, not to the motion, but just to add what Kevin said. I, my hope is that we're back here with this on the thirteenth. And just for someone seconds this, I just want to close with, because this came to us today. The entire goal, as I said earlier, and all the work of so many people on this piece of parcel, which is really a historic piece going back all over a hundred years in this community, is to enhance the access to water and the Deportant River for it, for the residents and users, not just the Worf area, but the river. And there's no intention or any way, someone suggested to me today that wanted to do this to build something there. It's, it's within the A C E C, area of critical environmental concern, you could never build anything there. You can read any of these documents, the entire goal of this is, is just as I stated, is to enhance the, the ability of community to gain access to this beautiful piece of nature. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Kevin.
Welcome, Mr. Wells. We have a motion. Do we have, okay, Mr. Fryte, your hand is raised?
I'm sorry, I'll take it down.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Wells. Is there a second to his motion, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Is there any discussion? Seeing no hands raised, we'll call Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Musto.
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Very much appreciated. And now we will turn to agenda item seventeen. And again, recognize that it will be deferred as referenced until hopefully our meeting of July thirteenth. Now we turn to agenda item number eighteen, discussion update, town administrator screening committee. We'll be calling on Mr. Wells and Mr. Zulus, who might like to take the point on this.
Go ahead, Michael, if you want to speak first, that's fine. It's up to you. I'll do whatever you want.
Yeah, I mean.
Will I make you catch his breath?
Yeah, all right.
Why aren't you ready on the last item? Thank you, Michael.
The, the update is that the, the town administrator screening committee has completed its work and, and will be submitting a list of finalists to the select board.
And when is that expected, Mr. Zulus?
It is, right now, there is a background checks being done by the Collin Center of the finalists. And it will be after that is concluded. So I think, you know, within the next week or two, probably within the next week, I imagine.
Thank you. Do you anticipate that we could hazard a guess when we might establish an interview date?
I have a thought on that, Mr. Chair. I just, just going through the process we went through and the, and how much time it took. Depending on, I think, the feeling of the board as to how long you want to interview the candidates. The prior interviews we did were about forty-five minutes each. It consisted of about a dozen questions. If we're going to go anything near that or even thirty minutes, I just think it might behoove us to do this in a separate meeting, to do this separately without anything else on our agenda at that time. Just my thought on that.
I agree with that.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want, I just want to thank to, I want to thank Mary Icotti and the Collin Center for all the work they did. And all the candidates who applied, all the candidates that we screened and interviewed. There were some very capable and also very capable, caring people who care about municipal government, care about this community and took the time and the interest to apply. And go through the process that we put them through. And finally, I really want to thank President Ken Quigley, who made open to us his facilities at his campus, all three of the sessions that we conducted in it. It really helped because we were, no distractions, a great environment setting to do these interviews. And I, I want to thank him, as I've said many times in the past, he's a great partner for this community. And once again, he didn't hesitate when the question was made if we could do these there.
We want to thank you, Mr. Wells, and you, Mr. Zulus, for all that you have done and it's very important, a responsibility for the town of Milton. It is not an easy assignment and it's obviously been very well done. So thank you and congratulations. My initial reaction is to see if we can indeed have a dedicated meeting at which the interviews can take place so that there are no distractions, distractions are minimized for other business. And hopefully get that scheduled to the advantage of everybody involved, recognizing that we want to conclude that process in such a time that we can make a timely offer to the candidate who is chosen with a respectable turnaround time so that we can have hopefully this very important process wrapped up and a new town administrator in place as soon as possible, as soon as reasonably possible. Any other comments or any questions for Richard and Michael by other members of the board? Again, thank you. We will turn now to agenda item nineteen, discussion update approvals, select board committee review process and subsection A of voluntary appointments. I'm advised by Town Council that we should probably defer, that we should defer the select board committee appointments. The Town Council recommends that the proposed members of the committee be itemized on the agenda and posted publicly. So we apologize for the delay in not having that done for this evening. I don't think that will hurt us. But I wish we had been able to accomplish it tonight. I would ask Ms. Bradley and Ms. Musto if they have any thoughts they want to share on On a process development. Or do you want to defer that until we have the committee? In place with the approvals?
Mr. Chair, I I and I'm only speaking for myself, not Roxanne, but I would prefer to defer that until we have the appointment.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Ms. Musto?
I would agree with that.
As do I. Thank you both very, very much. Item number twenty, committee appointments. Select Board Landing Committee, Josh Lee, Assistant Town Planner. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint Josh Lee, Assistant Town Planner, to the Select Board Landing Committee.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second that one. Okay, Mike, sorry.
Mr. Zulus is the second?
Oh, I beat you. I beat you.
You did.
Seeing now hands, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes, thank you. But item number B twenty B, Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. This was previously deferred from our June nine agenda. We have two candidates for appointment to this committee. Stefan Burnett and Andrew Schmidt.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to. Appoint Stephanie Burnett and reappoint Andrew Schmidt to the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wells' motion. There is for Mr. Zulus. Seeing no hands for comment, roll call, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
I'm going to abstain until the committee is set with how we appoint to boards and committees moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Ms. Musto?
I I will say yes on these two.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. And Mr. Doyle, yes. Twenty C, Community Preservation Committee. Richard Baylor. Planning Board. This is. By statute, someone from the planning board is appointed to the CPC. And several other bodies in the community, such as the Housing Authority and the Conservation Commission. In the past, we have reconfirmed their appointment. Richard Baylor is the appointee of the planning board. So we will seek confirmation of his appointment.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair, to appoint Richard Baylor of the Planning Board to the Co- Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
So thank you. Roll call, Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number twenty one, Town Administrators Report. Amberie, could we turn to you, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of items I want to update the board on. I first want to thank the Board of Health. And the Milton Coalition for sponsoring a NACAN training for town employees. The training was conducted by Manic Community Health Center. This training educated employees about the opiate epidemic. How to recognize an opiate overdose and how to administer administer NACAN safely and effectively. And and the training was fabulous. Every employee that went to it. Raved about it, raved about the information that they learned from this training seminar. And if one life is saved by what we learned here during this training seminar, it it's a great thing. So I do want to extend my thank you to the Board of Health and to the Milton Coalition.
Thank you, Ms. Fagan. Any questions?
I'm sorry.
I was gonna ask if there are any questions on that for you? None? Okay, Ms. Fagan.
And I just wanted to update the board on the K L Scott, where we are with the K L Scott study. As you know, the the town hired K L Scott Group to conduct. To help the town navigate the D E I journey as and as we continue to develop and broaden our diversity, our equity and our inclusion strategies within the town. When I came on board in February, we did have a kickoff meeting in March. To talk about the initiatives and the project scope and the objectives of what we wanted to gain out of this study. And. That kickoff meeting was well attended. As a result of that kickoff meeting, a survey was compiled. It was sent out to. Um, every town side, not to include the schools, every town side employee, which was approximately two hundred and thirty nine surveys. Of those two hundred and thirty nine surveys, K L Scott received back ninety three or ninety six, I think. Uh, surveys and K K L Scott is currently. Reviewing and summarizing those surveys and they will be requesting to come before the Board of Selectment at a future meeting. So that we can discuss what we, the results of that survey were and how to plan goals and objectives going forward. Forward in our strategic plan. So once I, they have finished doing their due diligence. I will place them on a future agenda and we will continue this process. And that is it.
Any questions on this item for Ms. Fagan? Seeing none, thank you, Amberie, very kindly. Now go to the Chair's report. I just have three things I'll touch on quickly. Uh, first, yesterday's two thousand and twenty two Mass Trails Grant Award Program. Recognizing the family foundations contributions to. Work that will be done by the Department of Conservation and Recreation with the event being held at Wall Street. At the Wall Street Park is an appropriate setting. Maybe somebody wants to comment on it who was there. Roxanne and Amberie, Mike and I were able to attend and it was extremely well done.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wells?
As you know, I was really upset that I wasn't there, but I really want to thank. Uh, a former assistant planner, Allison Quinn, who did a lot of work, Karen Marina, to make this happen. There's, some of you may know, we applied for this last year and didn't get it. They reapplied this year and we did receive it. And again, one more step only to enhance the beauty and the amenities for residents. In this section of the community in Low Mills. It will be a major recreational enhancement. Ties into wellness, the environmental preservation, so many very, very positive attributes and and. Again, it was extremely well conducted. There were a hundred bike. Yeah, sorry, Amberie, go ahead.
And the weather really cooperated in in showing off the beautiful idyllic space and the greenery and and the Ponce River and. The walkways. It was a, it was a great morning, really was.
And for those of you who were there, if you noticed the the small dredging barge that was out on the water. That is the fruits of the grant that we received from the Seaport Council last year to do all of the. Um, sauna scanning and citing and permitting for a potential dredging grant for next year to the Seaport Council. So. They're moving very quickly on this and that's a good thing. I just, one final thing, Mr. Chair. Do go there a lot and on Saturday afternoon. I happened to find eighty bikers down there that I had never seen before in my life, but these weren't just. People like my wife, Lee Tomo, who ride all the, these were bikers with that. They were part of a. I think a fifty or seventy five mile bike journey that took, traversed our bike path and then came out, exited the bike path. On Adam Street over Milton Hill and the. The final destination was Wamper Tuck State Park and hang where they all camped for the night. So. Those are the types of things that come through here and use these amenities. A lot of people don't even see.
It it is a tremendous asset to the town. And having it enhanced is so vital. And speaking of enhancements. The second topic that I wanted to mention, and I feared I I should have said four instead of three. Is the Superfund. And the lower and the super fund project that has been approved. We heard about it at prior meetings. We submitted a letter. In support to the EPA. And last night at six thirty, Department of Environment Production along with NEPR. They had a Zoom, which was recorded, very well worth taking a look at. Goals are outlined. There are. Two major approaches, the removal actions that will take place, well, the upgrading of that three point seven mile stretch of the Ponce. And then the remedial action. And twenty twenty two. There'll be much work being done on the investigatory side. And then in twenty twenty three, they will initiate the field sampling. But the timetable is is difficult to ascertain because of the fact that. There are unknowns and not just in terms of what may be discovered in terms of. Our chemicals or other pollutants, but what objects there might be. That are not visible, that they'll have to work around to deal with, remove from the river and so on. The one caution that was provided very strongly was that the citizens not engage. While work is going on in that stretch of the river. That. Nobody participate in recreational activities there or try and. Take any wildlife such as fish from the river for human consumption. More on that as time passes, there will be community engagement. We'll hear about those opportunities. Next point I wanted to mention was the fire station groundbreaking and many of us were there for that. Richard, you were the point person on the committee. Might you want to make a comment to that?
I just want to thank everyone who came, you know, Chief Madden. All the past chiefs, Chief Grant, Chief Chief Lawson and Chief Alfonado, all of whom. Um, you could see we're definitely happy to see this. All the residents and neighbors of. Your neighborhood, Michael, who came out, the schools on either side, all the kids came. Um, this is definitely a huge, at the beginning of a huge and badly needed upgrade for the fire service in Milton. So. Thank you to so many, Chair Walsh and his committee, so many that have worked so hard on this.
And those children who were there, Mr. Zulus, I'm sorry.
I I was, I was just gonna say one person who was unable to make it, who I happen to be speaking to today, who was uniquely. Responsible for these fire stations being built is Tom Hurley and and Tom. And it was inadvertently left off this, this, this one, but I told him there there will be other groundbreakings and we had, we need to make sure that that Tom is is there because. It it it's his funding, funding mechanism that really, that really made this happen. So.
Oh, the point, just to follow up, Michael, he wasn't. We brought him up. And no one had a contact from. That was the problem.
Oh, no, oh, no, I know.
Oh, yeah, no one had a contact from.
No, no, he, he know, he just, he he knows it was inadvertent and he he was laughing about it. And I said, well, next time we'll make sure, we'll make sure we get you there.
Well, maybe recognizing all the helmets that were distributed. During the ceremony, the groundbreaking ceremony might lead to the notion of a of possibly presenting him with a real helmet. And the last topic that I wanted to mention is the progress on the East Milton Deck. We received. An email and notification from the State Transportation Department on that and it is. A noteworthy that so many people. Have been commenting from not only East Milton but elsewhere in town. On the progress that has been made and particularly since we had a meeting with the Secretary of Transportation, Senator Timothy. Our state representative, Bill Driscoll, and many others. There are even trees now are waiting to be planted. There are about a half a dozen or eight trees. It's, it's nice to see the progress that is. Being made at the present time. Richard, be a fellow neighbor there. Did you want to say any?
No, I I'm with you, Arthur. I mean, I've. People actually have said to me, especially this weekend at the festival, like, wow, it's taking shape. It's like really beginning to look like something. So. As I've said all along, this is one of those thousand piece puzzles and it's just so hard to get to that point where you actually start to see some vision of what's going to be. We're getting there. They're even working Saturdays. They worked all, they worked probably ten hours on Saturday.
I hope they beat that October timetable. I I think they're working on doing so. The Senator Chair's report, I have no public comment response unless another member of the board has anything that they want to say. Any response at this time, Mr. Zulus?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to to refer to a couple of speakers who who. Spoken opposition to an action that the board has taken, and that is to to petition for review on the. On the four L RNEV. And and I think it's important to to point out that the. The what we're petitioning against and what we are seeking review of. Is an environmental assess, final environmental assessment that will lead to more planes coming over Milton. There will be more planes coming over Milton. Yet based on it, based on the four L RNEV. And so what this board is trying to do is to see what we can do. To prevent more planes from coming over Milton. There has been no suggestion by anyone. In response to the claims by the FAA, by Massport, by the M C A C. That somehow we could, we could say, well, we'll put fifty percent of the planes on four L and fifty percent of the planes on four R. It's not a zero sum game. It's going to be more planes over Milton based on, based on the use of four L. As an RNEV. And so, so our effort here is to see what we can do to prevent that. And to and to try to prevent that. So I think it's important to to understand that we're trying, we're trying to prevent more planes from coming over Milton and. And and one of the speakers mentioned dispersion. We tried. And we have tried and will continue to try to have dispersion so that some of the planes that are over Milton can be dispersed to the prior routes that went over other towns. But to have more plans over Milton is just not a, not, at least in my view, a good result and it's worthy to to try to seek some address from.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Zulus. Any other comments? Let us turn now to future agenda dates and future agenda items.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, just for a minute before we. I just want to, I'm, I'm, I don't see members reports on that, on the. Agenda tonight. I just want to say a thank you to so many people who attended the Milton Music Festival and Fireworks this weekend. We had. Over four thousand people attended over the two days and. This was our night there and just to have something that big in Milton, that so many families of so many backgrounds came through. It's pretty amazing and I just want to thank especially all the departments who helped us, all the sponsors. Committee, it's only a committee of six, puts the whole thing on and. Next year is our tenth and we're having our first planning meeting in the next week or two to try and already start to get rid of. Thanks. So thank you all. Thank you to everyone who helped make this really wonderful weekend for Milton happen. So thank you for that.
And we should recognize you and your.
Don't recognize me. Too many people think like I'm not, I'm, I'm just.
You're an integral part of making it of the happening, happening.
I'm just glad to see a field that for all of my life, probably most of my father's life and the yard life, Amberie. Of anyone that grew up in Low Mills that just sat there idle unused for so long. To come to life the way it does, even for the short time that we did. But now every day I see more and more people using it. Just, it's amazing. It's a beautiful view and. Um, after the past few years we've had COVID, it was great to have something for select community outside. So. I I I'm, you know, I'm so grateful for the people that have helped do this. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. We have as our next two meeting days, as mentioned before, in July thirteenth. That's a Wednesday and then Wednesday, July twenty seven. Returning to our early discussion about shifting the calendar. I was able to work with the Conservation Commission last night. And they will change their Tuesday meeting date to accommodate a shift for the select board. To go to the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. So everybody could just reflect on. That as of the workable solution we were trying to reach during our last discussion. Mr. Zulus, your hand is.
First and third, if it's Tuesday, might be better for me. I I have had a second. The second Tuesday of the month has been, is 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 currently scheduled for me. So just to throw that out there.
Well, this work for everybody else, the first and the third Tuesdays of the month. Mr. Wells? I think you mentioned the conflict with the first Tuesday. You're muted, Mr. Wells.
That's the, the third Tuesday of the month is the only Tuesday of the month that will work for me. First, second or fourth, those definitely work.
Could we look at the?
I know.
The first and the fourth is tight because then we get almost back to backs as we shift from one month to the next.
Then we get it out of the way. It's all done. Get it all done quick. That's it. We do two agendas of thirty-five, thirty-five items each and then we'll take the rest of my buff.
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley, you have your calendar firmed up?
I do, Mr. Chair. Yep, I, I only have Tuesdays free. So all Tuesdays, every Tuesday of the month I have free, but I do not have any other nights free except for Friday nights.
Well, we won't worry about Friday night.
So can I, Mr. Chair, maybe, so maybe if, if, if perhaps in just, say, June, July and August, if those three, if we could do it on the, which, do you have a problem on the third, Michael? Do you have a problem on the third Tuesday?
No, just, just the second, the second Tuesday. And that may be, that may be ending, but right now, the second Tuesday.
No, this doesn't need to start until, I mean, my classes don't start until August twenty-second. And I can miss, you know, a Select Board meeting in August. I'd be, you know, other people have already missed one, so I'd be fine with that.
I wouldn't even want, because I could, I may be on vacation that week. So that week I don't, I'm just thinking, I'm trying to look forward to what would be your vacation weeks, Aaron, like so. You know, there's no school. That's what I'm trying to cover.
So no school is like December and part of January.
Then, then June, July and August.
Yeah.
If I'm here next June, July and August, depends on what I do.
Yeah.
June, we know all you have to worry about.
It has already passed, so let's look at, I'll live with it. I'll, I'll figure something out. I'll figure something out. But the, the summer are the three most important ones, so.
So we'll have the thirteenth, the twenty-seventh, Wednesday, the ten.
You're talking on August, Appa?
Yeah, he's in August now, August tenth. And you guys could do August twenty-fourth. I just won't, I won't be able to make that one, but that's fine.
What we're looking at is August twenty-three with that. That would work for Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For Richard?
Yeah, so our twenty-three is good because twenty-fourth I am making the ride to northern New York.
Oh, so that absolutely.
Wow, Syracuse country.
Yes, so that's the delivery day.
All right.
That's what you call it. I don't even know, departure day.
Do you see Syracuse football games, Richard?
Yeah.
We can rotate.
Yeah.
One of your house one year, one of my house the next year.
I'll drive you up there. We'll go up there on that dome.
Okay, so we're all set for at least four coming days, Roxanne.
I still have a question. Anne Marie, are you, I thought you said you were on vacation at some point.
I'm on vacation in the first two weeks of August, yes, so I would, I would miss your August third meeting.
You're entitled to.
August third or August tenth?
Well, we would have the agenda posted before that, the previous Friday.
What would, what would the meeting dates in August start? After the third of the?
End of twenty-three.
I'm sorry, tenth. Yeah, I would be, I would be gone on the tenth.
So we'd be posting on the, the fifth?
Yes.
You'd be here on the fifth that morning?
No, I wouldn't be here that week.
Okay.
No.
What dates are you going, Anne Marie?
August first to August twelfth.
Maybe we should work around that.
I, I can do remote.
You can do remote? Okay.
I can do remote.
Well, that's a good, that's a good point. We're, we're, we're only remote. We only, nature acts. We need to start meeting in person.
That's true.
Until they, until they.
But I could be remote to help, to set the agenda. I could work during the day and help him set the agenda.
And you could call, you could call in too.
Yes, yes, you can call in.
Yeah.
I thought I heard one of the reps say, Michael, at our last meeting, that they do expect this to be extended. They don't want to take it away, so that's what.
I think they're gonna know that within another two weeks. We, we might know even by our next meeting or two. So do you want to just make sure we have those two scheduled and, and see if we know anything by the next meeting? Let me just a thought.
Vote makes it easier for all of us, especially if someone goes on vacation in August and wanna do it remotely.
You probably have to have a few more meetings in July as well, once the candidate.
Yeah.
Yeah, the candidates are named. You're gonna have to meeting to do interviews and then a subsequent meeting to, to appoint.
Okay, so we're, we're okay with what we have on the table for thirteen, twenty-seven, ten, which will jury rate and the twenty-third.
Yep.
Okay, good.
That's excellent. Thank you, everyone, for making this adjustment. I really appreciate it.
Well, we understand. And you would do the same for anybody else.
Hundred percent. Absolutely, Mr. Chair.
Future agenda items, I'd just like to mention a, a couple that I hope that we can act on very, very quickly. We have work to do with the Equity and Justice Committee. And we don't want too much more time to pass on that. We have the sign-free corridor that's pending and we have the Milton Arts Center that's pending. And if we could move on those three other, other ones that you have as priorities? Just that you can send them into Anne Marie and, and me on a separate cover and we'll take it that way. I know we're all tired right now. Okay, item number twenty-five, discussion approval, meeting minutes, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to recognizing that Mr. Napoli is now on the couch, which means I don't know how much longer we'll have her. I'll move to approve, I'll move, I'll move to approve the meeting minutes of March ninth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Saying no, Ian's face, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
From March? I'm gonna abstain. You said March or May?
That's right. It is March twenty-two. Do you want to pull back your vote, Aaron, abstaining because it was pre-election?
I, I read them. They looked like they were fine. I don't, mark me any way you want.
And Mr. Doyle?
Lynn did a great job piping them up.
Good. And I saw nothing. I was to comment. Thank you, Lynn. At this time, I'll have to take a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Second, Mr. Zulus?
Beat you, I beat you again. By the way, Roxanne, I'm, I'm downing the cherry juice, so.
Oh, is that working at all?
Where'd you get it back? Did it come back?
No, no, no. I'm just.
Preventative, preventative.
Exactly.
Yeah, see if we can do this at your end before it turns to ten. Oh, it didn't. It turned to ten fifteen. That's our turn time. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
No, let's, we, we have something else to do now, yes, yes, yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you all very much.
Bye, kids.
Good meeting.
Bye, thanks. Bye. Have a good fourth. I'll see you when I get back.
And don't forget to read the Declaration of Independence. You don't have to do it on a train ride.